...the irregular meeting of the Elginak Community Schools Board of Education on Monday, June 26th at 7:00 PM. Please rise for pledge allegiance and moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will call please.
Nicole Emery.
Here.
William Brady.
Here.
Bill Clark.
Here.
John Highstreet.
Here.
Andy Lee. Janice Pascoe.
Here.
Jennifer Baker. Here. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. And first, we have Amy Bishop and Kelly Baker with us to present on the new teen health clinic.
All set? Yeah, so tonight, we had hoped and originally scheduled in May for Amy and Kelly to come out and talk. And they had some ideas and some things that they wanted to share with the group. However, I wanted to make sure that we got through all the proper channels to get to this point so they could present to you. And I am, like I said, open for any questions afterwards. So they've got a little PowerPoint for us. And then afterwards, they'll move on from there. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. We really appreciate the time. This is Kelly Baker. She is a licensed master social worker and serves as a public health supervisor and focuses on the satellite clinics, as we call them, or school-based clinics. My name is Amy Bishop. I'm the nursing and community health nursing director. So with that, I kind of wanted just to give you just a brief introduction because I do have some background working and experience working for over three years in our teen health center located in Port Huron. And they actually moved in the early years from modular unit and now have a mortar and brick building. So I served as a coordinator and a registered nursing nat setting and worked with a nurse practitioner very closely for those three years. I would see students, prep students. We work, nurses can work under standing orders because we file under the medical director as well. So if any questions that we have goes to the medical director. And then the nurse practitioner's role is that she can, it's expanded for nurses. And she can actually diagnose different acute and then manage even chronic illnesses. Of course, that's done when a child has a family doctor in correlation and communication with that doctor. The advantage of having one in your school is it reduces absenteeism, right? My favorite saying is if a kid doesn't feel well, they can't learn well. So keeping them feeling well, keeping them in class is really our goal. The extra advantage to all of that is parents have convenience. I was a busy mom at the time, raising four kids. And I know what it was like to try and use my sick time and balance that with four different children trying to manage different doctor visits. So for me, I never, my school, my children's school didn't have a school-based clinic where I could send them. But boy, if it did, I would have used it because even running up medication to your child can be cumbersome. And it really puts a load on your office staff for sure because there's headaches, there's cramps, there's sprains, there's strains. So many things go on. And the office really should be utilized for other things. And so our goal is to take the strain off of parents, keep it convenient, take the strain off the office staff. And the biggest goal is, of course, is to help kids access the medical and mental health care that they need. As far as the mental health piece, we used to see kids that just needed to talk. We as adults know how relationships can be difficult to manage. And our kids are, are dealing with that too. They're not easy. So all in all, we look at it as keeping our kids feeling well, reducing the barriers to care so that they can learn well. So I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about that. It was honestly one of the best experiences in my professional career. As far as education, that we present to the entire classrooms, notes go home to parents to allow them to know what is being discussed in the classroom. And then, of course, if there's an issue, they can knock it out. But many times, it's things like hygiene. Or we have another class called LEADS that helps students recognize danger signs for mental health risks, like thinking about suicide and help a friend through that, point them in the right direction. And it's all evidence-based curriculum. I know if you've got a kid in your life, you know you can tell them something over and over, but until they hear it from somebody else, they don't listen. So sometimes having somebody have that backup is good. Takes a village to raise a child, right? So I appreciate your time today. Kelly is going to now go over some of the services that we provide, the services that we do not provide, what our limitations are and how we can link things that are out of our scope to other specialists and referrals that way. And so I'll leave her to it.
Hey. So as you said, my name is Kelly. I am the social worker for, the supervisor for all of the offsite clinics. So we do have teen at Port Huron and we have Saffa SE4, Community College. We have a nurse over at Marysville School District. We will be having one out in Yale, the addition here, there's one in K-PAC. So we're kind of spreading out a little bit all over, trying to get these kids to, again, get that healthcare that they need and try to teach some of that independence as well, right? Like we, eventually, they grow up to be 17, 18 years old and don't need mom and dad to make those calls. And so this kind of can help them transition into that stage of adulthood. So just some background information on what to expect when the center comes here. So again, like she said, we have a mental health professional. So that will be a licensed master social worker through the state of Michigan and a nurse practitioner. So we'll have both of those services available year round. So whether it's spring break, Christmas break, summer break, those offices will be open to all of the children from this community. Now, I copied this from the other teen one. So there's, serves kids from 10 to 21, but the difference between your clinic is it will serve ages from ages five to 21. Let's see, three days a week. So those will be set in stone with the exception of there's obviously potential changes when it comes to snow days or, you know, Mondays that, you know, we're not here or Fridays that we take off during the year. But it will be three days a week consistently with the same staff in place. Everything is grant funded. So there's not any kid that's not going to be denied or inability to pay. So obviously, if there's insurance on file, or we can get that insurance from the parent, we're going to bill that insurance to try to recoup some of those funds. But they're not going to get a bill if their insurance rejects it or there's, you know, insanely high co-pays or deductibles, okay? Most insurance is accepted and we can also help them apply for Medicaid if they meet that criteria. And we can get them, kind of link up with them, get that application done for them. So some of the mental services, physical exams, sports physicals. So we can do all of that right there in clinic. Like Amy mentioned, acute and chronic illnesses. So things like asthma, allergies, things like that, we can help manage those immunizations. So those things can be done on-site as well. Lab services or testing. So that can include things like flu swabs, throat swabs for strep, rashes, skin, you know, swabs, COVID testing, STI testing, things like that. Prescriptions can be provided, like e-scribed, over to the pharmacy. So again, nobody's got to take kids urgent care when they get out of work. It's just a matter of picking that script up, picking the kid up from school, going on about your day. Some medications, like over-the-counter meds, can be administered on-site. So they have, you know, like Motrin�inol, those kinds of over-the-counter things. Referrals to specialty services. So again, if there's a concern that's, like she said, out of our scope of practice or something that we think a doctor would be better off, you know, following up with, then we will coordinate that care with their primary doctor, if they have one, or refer them somewhere else if needed. And then, like she said, we can provide the education in classrooms as well. We have a whole list that can be provided if you want of the different topics that they have historically presented to classrooms and things of that nature. The counseling services. So we do assessments. So that includes, you know, just what the current concerns are with that particular child, if anything, family history, if there's anything, if there's issues in the classroom at home, whatever. Diagnosis, treatment planning, ideally with parental input and involvement will come back to that. But typically, it is something that is done as a team. So that social worker will kind of assess that situation and with that child discuss what are the goals? What do we want to see accomplished? How do you want to be feeling when you leave here? And those treatment sessions will occur, whether it's weekly, bi-weekly, every month, whatnot, based on what that child needs are. Case management. So again, helping linking them with other community services if that's needed. Again, education and resources. Not only can they see just the child in the facility, but group sessions. So if there's, you know, if the therapist has six or seven kids that are all short and kind of do the same thing, then we can hold those sessions in groups so that those kids can kind of talk with each other and see that they're not the only ones having that problem and work through some of those things together. And then family therapy. So if there's communication issues at home or the child really wants to talk to mom about something but really isn't sure how to approach it, those things can happen as well. Medication management. That happens very, very rarely, but it is something that's done with parental consent. So that is something we have to get consent for, working with the child. And that would be working with the therapist and the nurse practitioner. And then referrals for psychiatric services. So again, if it's something that's way out of the scope of practice for what we're doing here, then those referrals can go out, whether that's, you know, inpatient services or more intensive outpatient services elsewhere. The box overs still left for parental consent and ID are required for all of those services to clients under the age of 18. So nobody's getting vaccines unless there's consent on file. And we do them every time. Like it's not just a blanket, at the beginning, I sign it one time and then I can give you whatever vaccine I want to give you. Every time there's a shot given, that consent has to be signed. The only stipulation to the under 18, I think, I'm looking for the next one, yes, are confidential services. So in medical situations, and this is all again with what Michigan law allows, pregnancy tests, referrals for things like WIC or Internal Mental Health Program, STI education, screenings and treatment, education regarding HIV screenings and referrals, and then discussing how we can reduce risk in those higher-risk populations. Those things can be done for kids 14 to 17 without parental consent. They sign a minor consent form. And again, that aligns with state law. And that's something they can do even at their primary doctor. But that's not just something that we are only providing. Like they can go to their primary doctor and get that done as well. Counseling, same thing. We do a lot of crisis intervention. So something that's happening right here, right now, and we need the therapist to come in and talk. Substance abuse education, counseling, referrals, and again, just the regular basic counseling and assessments can be done for 14 and up with their own consent, with some limitations. State law allows 12 sessions before we have to cut them off or, you know, contact parents. So we really try initially to make sure that they understand that really helping their mental health means involving those people that are close to them and using all those supports. So most of our services, we do end up getting consent for at some point before that 12th visit happens. And again, that's done kind of in conjunction with the student and maybe a phone call to the parent and things of that nature. But we really do encourage it and try to include those parents as much as possible when it comes to the treatment of the kids, whether that's mental health or medical. Big questions about birth control, right? That's a big, big question. It is illegal in the state of Michigan to provide any type of family planning, whether that is oral contraceptives, any type of injections, anything that has anything to do with family planning services on school property. So if we were, you know, three blocks down the road, yes, we could do it. But we're not. We're going to be in the building on campus. So it is illegal. Pregnancy testing we can do. But if that girl tells us, yes, you know, yes, she's pregnant, we cannot provide any type of resources or portion referrals or anything like that. She would be referred to like an OB and that would be something they would have to do. Current locations, again, I kind of went over that in the beginning. So all of the different locations that we have, either a nurse and/or a social worker or both. The new locations added on here. Obviously, I don't know, you know, who's probably familiar. We have Carmella here already. She's on an E3 grant. So now that that's switching over, she'll be under the Child and Adolescent Health Center grant. So the social worker here will be the same social worker you've had. So that won't be changing. We'll just be adding the addition of the nurse practitioner. We're hoping to have like the limited medical services starting by the fall. So whether that's even just routine immunizations or sports physicals or something like that, something in addition to Carmella's services will hopefully be started by the end of September and then, you know, continue to be working towards getting things up to quote capacity. So this is just some fun facts about some of the other locations. So teen health in facility 22 had 978 visits from primary care. So the nurse practitioner, 825 with our social worker. So they're definitely using it out there. Our K-PAC Center. So again, that's just a nurse and that center. They have 103 kids that we're seeing in Marysville, 425. The K-PAC counseling, and that's at the elementary level. So we have a counselor at the elementary school in K-PAC. 335 visits for kids K through 5. That's a lot, I think. And I think, just for context, I think K-PAC's elementary school population is only like 342. So to have 335 sessions out of 342 kids is a lot. And then Elginak counseling sessions here, we had 558 this last school year. Any questions? There's a lot. You went through it kind of quick.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How about, how does it work with liability, having a clinic in, maybe Al can help too. Having a clinic in the school district, how does it, say there is a liability, is there liability coverage through the state, through the school? Does it cross over?
Sure.
Is there like a malpractice? Do you type, you understand where I'm coming from?
Yes, I think they operate out of our, like, health department, right? So would it be under the?
Right, like, so our medical director takes out that malpractice insurance, if you will. So that's covered under that. As far as anything that would be done medically or mental health-wise, that's covered under that entity.
So the district?
Now, somebody trips and falls or whatever on your property, I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
So is there, is the district here involved? Are we released of any type of issue that would happen in the clinic?
Like medical wrongdoing or something like that?
Yeah.
I believe, and again, don't quote me, we can absolutely like find this answer officially for you. But I believe since it is covered under that doctor's medical malpractice and under, like, all the services are being provided under the state or county health department, I don't think this would.
So it couldn't trickle in, like, something that would be there would trickle into?
It goes under the provider.
It goes, right, okay.
But we'll find out.
But I can look into, as far as, let's, I think, another question that's good to know, slips and falls, staff or something like that, you might want to know too. We have great contact pages. But I can certainly look into that.
Yeah, that's just, just from my experience, you know, with the liability concern.
I have a question. So you have like a seven-year-old that doesn't feel well, goes to see somebody. Are you going to have everybody's medical file? How is that, how does that work? Because they're just a child. How do they, how do they know what medications or whatever, like their history?
Right, right. So obviously, it hit that little thing, right? We would call mom, right? We would call mom and say, hey, we got your kid in here. Is she allergic to anything? Does he have any, you know, medications that he takes? You know, when did these symptoms start or were you even aware of them, that kind of thing? And like I said, parental consent is required for them to be seen in the clinic period. So we do have a blanket consent form that we can provide, that will provide, that does say, yes, my kid can be seen as needed. But they still, again, have to sign for medication administration and/or vaccine. So that kid, if the kid's already been in there before and the chart has already started, we have an electronic medical record. So everything, once that kid is seen, will go into that record and we'll have that stuff on file.
So along with the consent, the initial consent that's obtained from the parents, the parent fills in all of the history. So medications, allergies, things like that is already completed and then a phone call, touch base, you know, looking at that history as well.
And there is the option too, I think, with some of the younger ones, where we can do verbal consent over the phone, I think, on one occasion. So the initial, like, if, you know, Johnny comes in and has a sore throat, doesn't feel good, and mom can't get the consent form signed, we can at least call her and take the verbal consent over the phone. I am also working on online digital HIPAA compliant consent forms. So that is something we will have links for. And we can even text it to mom's day and just go on there, fill it out, click it, and we're good. And then that will come to me and we will upload it into the chart later.
Okay.
And the great likelihood is, since we're 712th building, you know, our younger ones, parent's going to bring them here. You know, it might be in Booker Melissa's building.
Yeah. But then you also have like the 12-year-old.
Yeah.
13 and under does not, does need the permission.
For everything.
For everything, yeah.
Yes.
So you got a 13-year-old that just wants to come in and, you know, has a problem, that's okay too. But like, is it just like, yeah, like with the teen health, at the beginning of the year or whenever, the parent fills all that stuff out. And so it's the same thing, basically.
Yeah.
My second, my second question though is, okay, so if you have one child, you said you can get a verbal approval. But what if their parents are divorced and then dad's got or mom's got a problem with, you know what I mean? Then where does that go?
So we have a consent policy regarding custodial parents, you know, joint legal custody, things like that. I don't know everybody, you know, off the top of my head, but there is a policy on that. And it also includes like the record, the release of information, you know, if this parent wants to call or, you know, that kind of thing. So there are policies on that. And that would be something we would just follow policy.
And then again, that would fall under walking into your arena.
Not on our, yes.
Now, as a nurse that has worked there, I definitely find comfort in having historical information on each student. Some schools opt to put it in their packets or within their online registration so that a parent can voluntarily provide all that upfront should an emergency happen. Then we have emergency medical information on file. That's always ideal and best. Will everyone fill it out? I don't know how much you have to chase Aaron's down to complete the registration information. I should have been browsing that. But it's really ideal. And so you can opt for that. It covers all of us better and, or you cannot opt for it. It's kind of up to you and maybe further discussion here tonight.
Would there be issues with collecting that, pricing? If they were to fill out a form like that, who collects it? Who sees it? How many hands would it pass through before it gets to you? So.
Right. So that's the benefit of having them online, like, because I, we can email them out and they can go on like an email blast. And then when they fill those out, when they click that link and fill it out, it's pre-programmed to come to me. So I get the alerts that such-and-such just completed it. And then I would be handling all of that.
Right. I think her concern is embedding it within their registration form. So that might be some conversation with your IT and how you're covered under HIPAA compliance or something.
And then on your, and then on your first visit, on your first minor visit, does that parent or that guardian have to personally bring that child into you?
No, no.
So you'll take that over, you'll take that form from the internet and accept that form coming to you? How do you know for sure the parent is the one who sent it or the parent is the one who signed it?
Well, if it, if it, this form that she's talking about is HIPAA compliant, there's, I believe, you have to scan their ID. And we always give a call, hey, this is the first time I'm seeing, because there's contact information. Our goal is to develop that relationship with parents, with faculty. I think going in and providing education in a classroom setting helps the students get used to, oh, that's my school nurse, that's my school counselor. And so collaborative approach is always best. But yes, phone calls and communication is most absolute.
And I believe, especially with the younger kids, I believe that teen contacts the parent like when they're in there anyway.
I just know from, you know, from experience, again, that, you know, we were always told that in order to treat a minor, any minor child, they just couldn't walk into the office. I was not able to call and get consent on the telephone. I needed the parent to come in and physically bring in the signed HIPAA form for the minor consent. I don't know how that's changed with the state, you know?
Well, technology's about upgraded, I think, is part of that.
I have someone that does that for me at the front desk. But that's just something, you know, that in my experience that I've come across. So I'm just asking.
And I'm wondering too, like, if a lot of it is different because it's in the school, because they are, we, you know, you know who, or you know who that student is and you know who that parent is. And we've talked to them. And so some of those links are already kind of made, especially, like you said, getting to know the kids and the parents. Especially in the smaller communities, I don't think it's that difficult, especially if you have a couple of kids that are frequent flyers, as we like to call them, to get to know those kids and those parents pretty well and understand, you know, when Johnny's upset stomach really isn't upset stomach or if it's just, you know, I don't want to do laxative class today or whatever the case may be. But I think the communication is what is most important. And ideally, again, those younger kids, with us being a junior high school, they're going to be brought over essentially by a parent nine times out of 10. Unless it's, you know, an extreme case where mom can't be reached and, you know, a teacher has to escort them over or whatnot.
Transportation barrier, that kind of thing. And the other thing is, we love to be present at, you know, enrollments or orientation time or other events to actually meet parents, discuss with them, and get a physical hard copy of signatures. Absolutely. That's always ideal because that promotes our relationship. So we want to come to your party.
Carmella does that. For teen health, Carmella will go to the different events.
Yes.
We just talked today about the, you know, the fall orientation and registration. So I told her, let me know when that is. And if we have our NP by then, then I'll bring her out. And if we don't, then I'll just come out and, you know, again, try to put more faces to the center and get those consent forms and things like that. The other big thing I want to mention before I give you back to your meeting is our community advisory board. So one of the biggest parts of the grant requires us to get this kind of input from you, right? From the students, the parents, the faculty, community members.
Students.
So, yes, students. The important thing about that is we're getting that feedback, right? We want it. The idea is, yes, we are providing the services, but it is your clinic. It is these kids' clinic. It is the school district's clinic. So we want to know, yeah.
No, I have someone to finish.
Oh. So we want to know, like, what that feedback is. What do you like, what don't like? What type of things would you like us to be presenting in the classrooms? And then maybe we can start researching some more evidence-based programming to support that. Is there something, you know, that we aren't doing that you would like to see or something that we would, you'd like to see us doing differently? When we had originally started this event, before we had our month-long pause, I guess you could call it that, was even including them on, you know, what color paint do you want in there? What color do you want the furniture? What do you want to be called, right? We call Port Huron to the teen health center because they see 10 to 21. So it's the majority of them are teenagers. But we're seeing kids, you know, potentially as young as five. So what do we want to call this place? And getting that kind of input so that there's buy-in from the kids and there's buy-in from the parents and it's supported and they feel more included. So I didn't bring the form because it's Monday and it's been a very hot day. But I have a piece of paper here, if you wouldn't mind putting your name down. If that's something that Aaron's just in doing. The meeting is what we think we are going to try to do quarterly so that we can kind of stay on track with things. I'll send out emails, that kind of thing. Attendance at them is not, you know, 100% me and you. We just have to have a legitimate roster and be able to say that we're, you know, having people that we can invite to these things. We'll also have both purposes. Cards are on the back. So if you want to just email us that information, we'll take that away too. What was your question?
Couple.
Yes.
The main, maybe I missed this, but the main office is here at this school, correct? How do we get your kids from your school that are sick or, I mean, that's, okay, it's cool for the high school, it's cool for the middle school. But you know, you guys got kids running away, more complaints, I think. How does that work? Do they, you just ship them out? Or you call parent to bring them here? Is that what it is? Say, little Jimmy's sick. Can you come and get him? Get him over here.
So that would be the ideal situation.
Yes.
If a parent's able to just stop what you're doing and go get him and bring him over. If that's not the case, then we call the parent and we say, hey, if you can't get here, can we go and get him? Or is there, you know, a parent or a student aid or a? Or is there, you know, a paralegal, or a student aide, or a teacher aide, or a, you know, can the nurse practitioner run over there and grab the kid?
Although we didn't that drive them.
Didn't that drive them, but if, you know, they're right there.
See, and I, and obviously in our case, it would be, you know, the convenience of it is, you know, even with Pauline Carey over there doing, you know, hey, maybe you need to go see them over there because they, you know, can test for certain strep throat, let's say, or prescribe medication. And, you know, hey, instead of going and waiting at the ready med or whatever, you got to pop right in over here and, you know, get them seen real quick, so.
And we'll have specific like adolescent only hours too, so that, that's something the state, I think, wants to make sure that we don't have five-year-olds in with like the eighteen-year-olds at the same time. Um, so we'll have that kind of set and shown as to what time we the, you know, for the littles versus the older kids. And then with the exception of certainly if we have a kid who's, you know, eight and needs to be seen, we will accommodate that as best as we can.
Right, walk in sick.
Try to, yeah, try to, you know, make that work.
See, you mentioned a good thing, though.
So they, you, you can't tell the little ones, you can only be sick between twelve and sixteen.
Right, no, and if it was something, and if it was something like.
But that's not, that's not really, that's not really in reality.
Now, we're gonna take a walk-in immunization for an eight-year-old? No, probably not. I would say, you know, tomorrow, we have openings during our kids' time, we'll make an appointment, bring him in tomorrow. But if it's, you know, a sick or urgent matter, then yeah, we're not gonna say, sorry, it's not here.
And also, you know, you said like services provided, all those medical, physical exams, all those things, counseling service, all those things. All those require parent consent, correct?
Unless they fit that fourteen to seventeen minor consent, yes.
And how's that work?
That is the state Michigan, State of Michigan, um, minor health consent law that basically says it gives those children fourteen to seventeen, um, protection to seek medical services for those specific things on their own without parental consent.
Right, Kelly mentioned STI testing, pregnancy testing, mental health.
Self-sense abuse.
Mental health, up to twelve visits. So, that really was a law put in place to protect student rights where there may be issues at home, whether that be sociological phenomena, transportation barriers, uh, parents that are unengaged or having, oh, they're overwhelmed with their own issues, and this child needs to be seen, or those students that just, that relationship with parents has broken down, and they don't have that open communication line like we always support and try to get there. But that allows them to seek healthcare for important issues that could be damaging to their health long-term if they weren't taken care of. So yes, that safety net is in place. Of course, as a nurse, I always want consent, but that's there for those few that, that need that, so.
And you said that that is not foreign to just the school, that's they could go into.
They could go to their DCPO.
Any place and walk in.
Now, a lot don't really like to do that because then they, what happens is, in order to maintain confidentiality, the student can't really opt for their insurance to be utilized, especially if they have private pay, an EOP goes home to parents. So that physician, let's say, that saw that teen would then have to absorb that cost, private pay. They don't really like to do that, and chances are you're not gonna get those fees from that student. Our grant funds cover those, that's what's nice about having the grant, is that no one is turned away for inability to pay, or in a case like that where it would be a barrier to the students obtaining the healthcare they need.
I, I got two quick questions, that, this is not a substitute for a primary care provider, correct?
No, 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 no. And everything that we do, so like we say, I always use the name Johnny, and so a little Johnny comes in and he's, you know, acting up a storm and not feeling great. We do this, we're gonna absolutely say, hey, we'll take them as follow-up with your primary doctor. We'll send, um, a form or fax a form or call the doctor, well, hey, we had Johnny in here, we sent him home with a maxidil and whatever, um, you know, call him for a follow-up appointment, and then that stuff gets documented. So we try to include that primary doctor, again, because they have one, um, as much as possible. And if we don't, we have, again, another frequent flyer who comes in and seems to be sick all the time, that's a kid we're gonna try to do the outreach with. Like, okay, let's try to find you a primary doctor, right? So that we don't have to come in here, maybe ask, but yes, there's a lot of communication with that doctor.
Okay. And then the second one, and this might be for you as much, Al, is if, if it's open to anyone in the county to come in, it's anyone in that age group, right? How did, how are we managing visitors coming into the building? Like, have we worked that out?
Yeah, um, so the actual location is in the back corner, and it's, for those of you who have been around here, it's across from Mr. Sims's room in the science wing. And right beyond that are outside exterior doors. And so what we did, in fact, uh, last couple of weeks ago, we had the door people and the security people come out, and we've already talked, kind of, this has been our grand plan overall, that we would have certain spots reserved for the clinic in that back lot, and they would enter through that door. So a couple of things come into play. Number one, we're not dragging sick kids out through the halls, you know, they're coming in from the outside. Um, it's an easy in and out for parents. And what we'll have in those exterior doors in that vestibule is we'll have a camera, they'll have a buzz-in system to where, you know, they know somebody's coming in, or they, they've discussed, you know, either they have an appointment, they'll be able to enter in. You know, once they see them on camera, they can buzz them in, and it'll be, kind of, we'll manage it that way. So the flow of traffic for people using from the outside will be through that back door and through that lot.
And the nurses are letting them in as opposed to the front office?
Correct.
Right.
The students, would they have to go out to come in?
I'm sorry.
Students, if their students come in.
No, that's not right.
So they'll have a door that's access for them.
Yes, right directly to the.
Yeah, they're, they're right off, yeah, they'll, they would come.
Yeah, if they're in feeling already, they don't have to go out.
Yeah.
Right through the health wing, there's a door.
So yeah, that, that's kind of how we're gonna manage the outside traffic. Good question.
And I mean, I guess it's technically offered to all of those kids in the community, but the majority of the kids and people that use it are the kids that go to the schools. You know, I mean, it's, it's generally used by the school, you know, the school district, the kids that are in the school district. Um, not, not saying that you won't get somebody from, you know, St. Clair comes down here to get a physical because they can't get an appointment anywhere else. We might have that type of thing happening, and we'll be able to accommodate that, but they're actively coming from, you know.
At, at that point, you probably have an urgent care closer to your family care area.
Another question too, you, since in Algenac, or there's one in Algenac, one in New Haven, and one in Port Huron, the community first health center. Do you guys work through them or help, or any party that's them or this?
Well, we, sometimes we refer there, um, a lot of, a lot of times that's to, for adults to be referred because they have slightly scales.
Yes.
So they're more of a federally funded, funded quality health center. And so we do a lot of referrals for those that can't get into another doctor for, for whatever reason that is. Many adults have outstanding bills at their previous primary care provider where that isn't a barrier for a federally qualified health center system to see them. So lots of times there's pediatricians and family docs to applaud that. But in this area, um, when we applied for the grant, we had it evaluated, you really have a shortage here in this community. And the school is a hub for some of those urgent things that we can keep kids in class, you know, that kind of thing. Keep them academically successful.
I've got two kind of quick, quick ones. Um, number one, your contact information that you don't have other copies of, I was just wanting to keep and get a copy of that and give it to everybody. And then my other one is, um, you said Carmella's, the grant for her has kind of been absorbed now under the, what's happening now? Does that free up that grant for us to maybe try and get somebody over at elementary school or something like that? Does that still, it's calling application?
We didn't have.
Okay. Is that something maybe we can look at?
So depending on how successful this is, like, I do hear that you're concerned that a lot of these, um, sick visits and stuff are taken up by the younger kids, and we're not as conveniently located for them as we are for the junior and senior high. But let's say this takes off really well, and maybe we, um, apply for an expanded where we, or we, um, we can find offset funding to send the nurse practitioner on those other two days to go visit.
Maybe like an oversight for the district.
Yeah. And actually be on site there.
Yeah.
This is really just a, you know, temporary start to see how things go, make sure that we've got the trust of the community, make sure that it's being utilized and needed, and we don't want to overstep boundaries, we want to be helpful. So I think that none of that is out of the question, and if there's, well, there's a way kind of mindset, kind of, can get us there for sure.
And I do have, like I said, the business cards back there with our contact information aren't there, but the roster, like, I've sent that to you. So if he, if you can either collect their names or whatever and send that to me, then that would be super helpful. Um, what I'm hoping to do is have that first advisory meeting in August before the start of the school year. Um, because, you know, we're gonna hopefully be running some sort of services by that point. Um, and so that, again, we can be, um, getting approval for the things that we need, like the policies and things like that before we get on the running.
And did you say that that could include parents also?
Yes, so it actually has to include parents.
Would that be here, or was it in Port Huron?
Over here.
Okay.
So again, parents of the students of the community, so.
If anybody is interested here, I think it would be a really good leadership role. Um, I think the community trusts the members here too, and, and then we, we get that, that advice from the actual community. We want to tailor the need, um, what your needs are, for sure. Getting people engaged and excited about this, as being, you know, an asset and a help is definitely.
How long is the grant good for?
So it's a, what they call it is a non-competitive grant, right? So until they decide that they're not gonna do this grant anymore at all, ever, it's pretty much every year we just submit the new application with what we've done previous year, what we need to do the next year, and the money's just kind of automatically, like, it's not competitive.
And you have a track record of that in the schools you've been doing it now?
Yeah, so teen health has been operating out of Port Huron High School for thirty-six years. So for the last almost forty years, even before there was ever any discussion about the importance of mental health and the importance of all of that, um, those grants were still coming through. So I don't see it disappearing at all. In fact, she even alluded, our state consultant the other day alluded that there's even more coming that we are not aware of. So, um, the fact that we got it already is a good thing, and all we have to do is contain it. As, as long as the funding is there, it's not going anywhere.
Yep, as long as we continue to meet those indicators, indicators for the grant, and we continue, we have continued to do that for over thirty-six plus years with teen health, and see that no way is an issue. The state doesn't want to give you this great benefit and then pull it away. That's, that would be just detrimental, especially when the funding is there more than ever because of the mental health needs of our kids, and us thinking more on a comprehensive level where our body and, you know, mind are connected. So I don't see that happening or being worried at all.
And just to piggyback up on that, part of the ability for us to bill is so we can be somewhat self-sufficient, right? So that if that, if that funding did get cut in half or was completely eliminated, we can be able to maybe at least have an NP there, a day and a half every week, right, rather than absolutely not at all.
But that's never happened.
No. So you know, funding goes up, not down.
We're responsible.
Right, so we're still bringing money in and recouping some of that, so it will go right back into the program.
And the other nice thing is that there are some physicians that just aren't able to accept Medicaid. And the state cuts, like, all of those students are covered, we accept what those rates are. So again, removing those barriers and helping kids who might not have access to health insurance or have pricey co-pays, especially if council and county have really pricey co-pays, we just accept what their insurance pays. So it's, it's just, it's nice because the accessibility goes up where there's need, and, and it's been determined that you have that need.
Do you have your days already picked out? Do you know, like, Monday was a Friday?
No.
You don't know?
No, no, um, so we just, the physicians were just posted last week, again, because of the board of commissioners delay vote.
Right.
So we posted those on Friday, it, um, doesn't go down until next Thursday or Friday. Um, we're hoping that we find some of the first go-round, but we aren't really sure. So what we'll probably do is talk again with the staff of the school, what works, what doesn't, see what, um, you know, that advisory board, come August when we meet, like, what do you want to see us, how, what days you like to see us here? And then, uh, because of just our time, what are the, what's the availability of those professionals that are there?
So would you be here, like, later than school hours? For people that, you know, if you need, you're, you have to work and your kid needs a sports physical at, you know, five-thirty or six? Are you gonna be open at three or four?
Ideally, we're mostly here when the students are here on campus, but it doesn't mean that we can't extend our hours. Lots of times we've done that to accommodate sports physicals specifically, we know those dates, and the school knows. And so we accommodate that, so that, you know, if a parent wants to come in and bring their child, that we're open late that, that evening. That's absolutely, one late night for health department line, and that's Monday nights, it's thirty.
Okay.
But it depends on what you choose, like, maybe Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays are your best days. We just kind of want some consistency there so everybody can remember, oh, yeah, the nurse practitioner's here today, or social coordinator's here today.
Hey, kind of piggybacking on that, I, I mean, I've asked you a million questions over the last few months and forgot this one. Um, summer operation, any hours in the summer?
Yep, so the same hours that we would be here during the school year, we're gonna be here during spring break versus spring, summer break, all the things, minus holidays, right? So we work the same schedule and holidays, everybody else, so we won't be here fourth of July, we'll be here Christmas, you know, the hours were shut down, shut down. But, um, yes, we will be there those days. And then, just to kind of piggyback up what you had said with the sports business and stuff, our Port Huron campus location, they follow our, our work hours. So they're there Mondays sometimes at six-thirty, and Tuesday through Friday, eight to four-thirty. We have kind of tossed that around, like, should they be there just during the school hours? But we do need somebody to be there at evening. So we have discussed that and are trying to kind of figure out, again, what could be best for that particular district, and what, um, what's being utilized. You know, if we're here every Monday till six-thirty and pitch black in the winter and nobody's coming in, we might tell the staff, just leave at four-thirty.
Right.
Um, you know, or the immune school's done or whatnot. But if it's being utilized, then absolutely. And again, we, for sports and clothes, there's always extended hours in the summer for, for preening for that next year.
Thank you guys so much. I, I, I gotta tell you, um, you know, St. Clair Health Department has been pretty good to us over the last few years. And, uh, this is just in addition to, you know, Carmella's services have been fantastic, and obviously by the numbers, you know, five-hundred-and-fifty visits, that's, you know, it's a lot of help for our kids that need it. And so I think that this is yet another service that, um, you know, we've asked the health department, we've asked people, you know, we say, you know, bring resources down here, we, we need them down here, and they've listened, and it's been, uh, been great. And I really appreciate the hard work you guys have done, and, um, you know, our next step would be to, uh, we gotta start transforming our science room into a doctor's office a little bit, but we've got plans.
Yeah.
We already have plans for that, and like I said, the, uh, security with the outside door, got that in the works too, so, um, we'll be moving forward with that. So thank you guys both very much.
Of course, of course. Thanks for having us.
Thanks.
Enjoy your discussion about this.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Moving along, here we have consent agenda items. Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion that the Board of Education approves all consent agenda items, including agenda minutes, personnel items, treasures report, and bills as listed, items A through C. Support?
We've just quoted any questions, comments? Polls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? If that passes. And information items, we now have our ninety-eight B goal progress reports.
Yep, and I, and I don't know that this will be the last time that we have to visit this. Um, maybe it will be, it's kind of was a COVID thing, and, um, we, you know, certainly have been following the guidelines from the state on the progress report, meaning, beginning of the year, mid-year, and then at the end of the year. Melissa, you wanna add a little bit about that, about, uh, what we have progress-wise and what that would like? I mean, you guys have the numbers for that, but just, uh, anything you want to add on that?
No, we choose to do the, which everybody at the county does, the NWBA is a nationally normed progress monitoring tool. So we choose in this district to use NWBA to monitor our learners from fall to spring. Um, this year we did look at trying to do it a couple of different ways, if we wanted to do like spring to spring and see, but at the contactive NWBA, it's meant to be done from fall to spring, um, so, which is why you're getting it now, because of course our spring testing ends in June, by the time we have all of our data and that. So, um, some really great growth, um, with our math scores overall and a lot of the grades. Um, but we were able to see a couple of grades that we're gonna really hone in on and make sure that we're, you know, some slack there to see our kids. And, and some of our teachers getting some extra help that too as well. But overall, scores look pretty good. Um, the NWBA test is all done online, and so it is a complete online assessment. And as you know, MSAT's completely online, and SAT is looking to completely online this year as well. So, um, trying to get all the kids ready to go.
Thanks. Yeah, and, you know, it's, even though the ninety-eight B was part of tied to funding and tied, you know, something that we had to do, you know, as you. You know, as you know, we've done NWBA testing and we've monitored like that for years, so it's nothing really new. So, you know, I complain because it's just another thing for us to do from the state, but it's not necessarily anything that we haven't been doing, so.
It's on there.
Yeah.
Ryan, oh, okay. All right, so then administrative reports. And with no Ryan, we'll go to Ms. Listage.
Hi. So our end of the year went really smooth. Had a lot of fun with field day. We did have to move it a day later because of the weather. We wanted to make sure the kids could have a full day of field day. All the end of the year performances were very good, especially our sixth grade performing arts and band concert. And the field trips were great too. So it was a really nice way to wrap up the year. I wanted to recognize a few of our sixth graders. Each year, the teachers and staff are able to recognize just a few students who go above and beyond and really stand out. And this year for the Evan and Martha Shemansky Award, it was Gavin Adamson and Kennedy Meinie. And the Fraternal Order of Police Award went to Reer Putney Ernst.
And Brooke's smiling because this is her last week award for the summer. Well, at least for a little bit. She's pretty happy, so.
Ms. Sanders?
And she's smiling for the same reason. No.
She's got some wrinkles. Yes, some wrinkles coming. So we, Millside also ended. We had a great end of the year. We did the OSPEC countdown. The kids did a great job. Field day, field trips, all of that fun stuff. Went really well. For those of you who don't know, Millside and Algonquin do an end of the year send-off every year. We, every, every staff member comes out, waves the buses out and hawks and noise. It's a big thing. It's really hard one. So if you're ever around at the end of the school year, come join us for our send-off. Things went great. On the other side of things, this is probably one of the busiest times of the year trying to gather the results of like talking to teachers and surveys and things for curriculum-wise, how everything went, what we need to do. Teachers are reaching out for some more training on different things. So lots of things coming in now trying to set up for the upcoming school year. Our summer school numbers are at a hundred and ten elementary students at this point coming to our summer academy starting on July tenth. So quite, well, actually a hundred and twelve because there's two that, Brooks said are coming that weren't on my registration form. So I'm going to reach out to mom to make sure that that's still the case. And so getting those ready, we do have ten Algonite teachers that are teaching summer school this year. We did not have to go out and find any like self-type of teachers. So they all are, they are all of our internal teachers, which is wonderful. It's incredible to have that piece that I really work it. So super excited about that on that front. The other thing is transitional kindergarten. We are going to do one section of transitional K next year and those are kids coming in. Transitional K is really a two-year kindergarten program. So it's kids that may be really young, need an extra year. It may be that academically they're just not ready. It could be that they have no exposure. So there's lots of different reasons. We have spoke to all the parents and have a pick of sixteen that would like to, you know, transitional K program this year, so.
Is it a full year, I mean, it's a full day?
It is a full day, yes, yes. So, but it'll really be more of that hands-on, play-based, you know, what is school about? How do I get along? How do I do all of these things that are so tough for so many young kids? So many of the districts around us offer some form of a transitional kindergarten. Although they call it young fives, begin your gardening, it's called a variety of names. Developmental K, they call it lots of different names. So we are going to do a section of transitional K next year. We're really, really excited about it. Dana Tebino has moved into the transitional K position and is super excited about doing that. So we can like an exciting year next year, so lots of things.
Thank you. Was that?
So our summer program started this week. We have a lot of fun activities planned for the kids, including an ice cream truck coming to the school. We have water days. We were able to purchase a lot of equipment for outdoors and just like summer activities with our grant. So that was really nice. The kids walk to the splash pad a few days during the summer. Science Alive will be coming and then Lashkey will be going to the movies and High River Nature Center. We recently put in a garden for all of our staff, students, and families, which the children are allowed. They go out there and take care of it, watering it and watching it grow and stuff. And then once it starts to grow, they'll be able to go out there and pick it. And we welcome families to go and pick if they want. So that's cool. And all of our classrooms are full right now and we just hired a few new staff. So that makes it a lot easier over there. Hopefully, we'll be able to open up our last room that's been closed for a while pretty shortly, so.
Thank you. And board reports?
I just have one thing. I'm looking for a twenty-five dollar donation from each board member for the flower fund. We're at one dollar.
All right.
Yeah, twenty-five dollars from each board member, so we can get it up there. That'd be great. And tonight if you see it, if not, we'll get it next month.
And then I got, I'll pass along, this is twenty-twenty-two stuff still, but we officially got our award for the M A S B Standard of Excellence that they delivered along with a spot, a plaque. We got the official tag here. So it's a little, little late, but we got it.
What years are on there?
This is twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, yeah. The honor board award, was that something different or is that same things? Do you remember? Because this is honor board and this is standard of excellence board.
Any difference between those two?
No, it's the same.
It's all the same, yeah, yeah.
No pressure here, yes.
Yeah, so John and Bill are coming on you guys.
Then we get to work, we all do the M A S B training, the CBA classes. Which there's someone coming up locally in McCall County. So that's an easy one to jump into. Get some of those classes.
Is that going in the office or?
I think we, I mean, if we're going to do that, we probably could, we'd probably display that right now.
Yeah, let's do it.
Hang it up before the meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Ms. Phil, it's us.
Yep, just a couple of things for you. I had an opportunity to meet with Senator Kevin Hurtel today, and he's our, our regional senator. And actually their office reached out to me and it was, went and had a good hour-long conversation today with him just about some of the things that, you know, a lot of stuff's floating around legislative-wise. You know, they're right in the middle of the budget, obviously, that's their, their number one priority. But some other things and he was very, felt real good about the conversation. I kind of feel like we have an ally in the Senate there with him. And I think that that's, the relationship's good. He's real excited. He's been talking about coming out and doing a one day a month out now and getting just sort of community people to come see him. He's setting up kind of a satellite office and just, you know, and I told him if there's something we can do to broker that and, you know, use an office here or something for a day. Just so he can be seen out here as a Democrat. He knows that he's not always going to have a lot of, not, not always going to be a leading vote getter out in, in our area all the time. And, but he's very practical, very logical, good thinker as far as I could tell. And real interested in, you know, moving schools along and moving us forward. So it was, again, a real good conversation and someone I kind of feel like we can reach out to if, if we need. On that kind of same avenue, the budget, he, according to him, they're, they're hoping to finalize this week. That's what I'm hoping for too. They've kind of promised all along July one. And the, the good news is I truly believe they're close. And I think that the things that they're starting to, that they're kind of not in agreement on, they're all good things for schools. I don't think that there's anything, you know, we looked at the Senate, we looked at the House, you know, proposals, governor's proposal. There's none of them that look bad for us. It looks like it's a good year, so. But it would be nice to get a definite number and definitely know what we have in each kind of pot of money. So we'll be looking forward to that. Principals have been very aggressive and very proactive with our staffing. You know, we, we had some retirees, had a couple resign, a couple move on to a different district. And we have, we're, we're pretty much fully staffed. Melissa's in the process of a first grade teacher that we're currently interviewing for. But outside of that, we're fully staffed. And I mean, we know that changes. We know August is going to come and people are going to, you know, it's going to get August twenty-something and somebody's going to come to the door and say, hey, I got this going. And, you know, that's part of the business. We deal with it every summer, like every district. But I feel real good about where we're on. I feel real good about the people that we've brought in, some real quality hires. And a lot of them are teachers that bring a lot of experience. And so I feel good about where we are moving forward. And hopefully, we don't have those August surprises. But if we do, I think we're in a pretty good spot to staff them. And then lastly, just our projects this summer, we've got some small things going on throughout the district. But Millside's heating and cooling is really our major project this year. That is, that's our, you know, our one-point-three-million-dollar project. And they're moving along pretty well. They got going kind of before the school year even concluded. And I think they're, should be on real good pace to get that done shortly, so. We're excited and Melissa will be excited about that when it's all done too, I'm sure, so.
We ask about it often, but has there been any update on the sound system and?
Actually, so they delivered, they did deliver some equipment there and Evan kept reaching out to them. So they have, there's pieces there, they're just waiting. In fact, we also put a bit out for the lights too because we're just going to get them all done now. Just going to do house lights and stage lights, get that taken care of. But as far as the sound system goes, there's some kind of amplifier that they're, that's kind of the cog in the whole thing, I guess. But they have told us that that's going to be here late summer, early fall, so that's the hopes. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Any requests? All right. We have a handful of action items. Let's move it through here. First up is our resolution for membership in the M H S A A. Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution as presented for membership in the Michigan High School Athletic Association for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. A complete copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes. Support.
Moved and supported, any comments, questions?
I don't like that mix as a. Other than that. Other than that, yeah, we've got to be in it, but, you know, I like them.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. We have a single overnight trip request for the cross-country camp. Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion that the Board of Education approve the overnight trip request to the Storer YMCA Camp in Napoleon, Michigan for cross-country camp from August fourteenth to the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. The cost for the trip will be paid by parents and funds raised by the team. There will be no cost to the district.
Support. Moved and supported, any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Up next is our return to work stipend. Would you like to do again this year? Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion, the, I'm sorry, that the Board of Education approves a return to work stipend for the amount listed below for employees in all groups that have worked and completed the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. One thousand dollars, MEA group, one thousand dollars, all administrators, five hundred dollars, P-twenty, ESP, custodial maintenance, bus drivers, food service, childcare.
Support.
Moved and supported, any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Up next, we have our administrative contracts. I can take this one. I'd like to suggest that the Board of Education approve a one-year extension of the current two-year contract for district administrators, Dorothy Getzel, Melissa Hanners, Mitch Landr, Brooklyn Listage, Ryan Melrose, and Amber Pluckey for the period of July first, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Support.
Moved and supported, any comments or questions? Nope. Oh, support. Okay. Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes. Keep a good word? We have tentative agreements with various groups. Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion that the Board of Education approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four agreements effective July first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four for the following. The A E A teacher personnel, the local one, five-one-seven M custodial personnel, the P-twenty personnel, and childcare employees.
Support.
Moved and supported, any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Up next is our transportation contract renewal. Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion that the Board of Education enter into and approve the five-year Dean transportation contract with version two B pricing as attached.
Support. Moved and supported, any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Nice job. And next, resolution for approval of the final budget amendment that we reviewed earlier this evening. Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution for budget amendment act number two as presented as the final budget amendment of the general fund, school service fund, and special revenue fund budget for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Complete copy of this resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support.
Moved and supported, any questions or comments on that one?
Thanks, Dorothy.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Up next, we have resolution for approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Would anyone like to make a motion on that one?
A motion that the Board of Education approve the general appropriation resolution for the adoption of the general fund, school service fund, and special revenue fund budget for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four as presented. A copy, a complete copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support.
Moved and supported, any questions or comments on that one? All right, here you go. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. And last but not least is the resolution certifying the millage rate collection for twenty-three, twenty-four. Would anyone like to make a motion on that one?
A motion that the Board of Education approves a resolution as presented, which certifies that for twenty-twenty-three, eighteen mills shall be levied for the operating purchases upon non-homeside and non-qualified agricultural property. Further, for that year, twenty-twenty-three, two-point-eight mills shall be levied upon all property for debt retirement purposes. Six mills upon personal commercial properties and one-point-eight-seven-eight-seven mills for sinking funds shall be levied on the taxable value of all classifications of property located within the school district. Complete copy of this resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support.
Nice job. It's been moved and supported, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. And I would like to make a motion to adjourn at eight-ten.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have a great night.